... meeting order and start with pledge. I pledge allegiance to the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common. Okay, did everybody have a chance to review the agenda?
Did I move to approve the agenda?
I second that. It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Sorry. Motion carries. Did everybody have a chance to review the minutes from the October 7th and October 17th?
Yeah, review the minutes and then move to approve.
A second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Did everybody have a chance to review the vouchers?
Yeah, I finished reviewing the last couple of things and I've moved to approve the vouchers.
Yes, a second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the vouchers. Is there any further discussion?
Takes a lot of money to pay your friends.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Hi, Christie. Christie, I have a question on Crown Construction and OSHA penalties. What's that?
So, we're not told what their specific penalty is. We just go ahead and when one of the if business gets an OSHA penalty, then they have to go ahead and submit it to my office and then it gets distributed to the schools. And I need to go ahead and notify OSHA that the penalty has been paid. But we don't get a description of what the infraction is.
So you're the record keeper for that?
Yeah, we just sort of, just to go ahead and distribute the collections back to the, to the school.
I'm just another duty, right? Okay, we have the annual compensation agreement with the University of Wyoming for a four H educator position. So you guys have a chance to review that.
It's fairly standard. We entered into one previously. When the previous extension coordinator was there, this is something we do every year. We pay a portion of their salary. The university pays the bulk and then manages them and all their benefits. It's just to have a four H youth development.
So since that position has been vacant for, does that take off those agreements?
So we don't pay for that period that we didn't have one. This actually starts in January.
Okay. Do you guys have any questions on the compensation agreement?
No, I don't have any questions on that. I'd move to approve that compensation agreement as written.
A second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the annual compensation agreement with the University of Wyoming. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, we have a sick leave donation. Is it four employees to one?
Yeah, and I want to be super careful not to say too much information, of course, since we're public. But an employee was actually injured performing job duties. So, it's an excellent employee. I think the cost of replacing would be detrimental, quite frankly. So I would recommend its approval.
Move to approve the donation of 144 hours sick leave from one employee to another.
I thought, that's my policy.
Four employees, sorry. Person who says a lot. Four employees to one.
I'll second that. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the sick leave donation of 144 hours from four employees to one. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, we have treasure writs on our agenda. Morning, Christie.
Good morning. I don't have much to report this month. Our collections have been coming in very well. Our, our sales tax is on track. Malcolm and I are working right now on a charge accounts for new programs. My general ledger currently has about 615 accounts. The one that United County Center for, as an example, has over 9,000. So I appreciate that Malcolm got the ball rolling to sort of give me a place to start to get her going. It's gonna be, it's gonna be quite task work and try to actually someone mean in the middle. So it's, it's easy enough, but enough that the recording that you guys would like to see and that makes the recourse that we need to submit fairly, fairly easy.
Yep.
So that's what we're working on. We just sent out our November reminders. So we only have one more month of new sales license plates to come.
That's right.
Which will make that, make our postage come back sort of to align with what we use this thing.
So your license plate's going to be dark blue here shortly.
Middle of December. Look around. If you don't see a dark blue license plate, assume you need one. They stick out a lot.
I got one more.
One more. That's the, that's the reason. So, so yeah, it's super important. Be easy to spot. Even on your fire truck.
Even on your fire truck.
I was driving along the other day and I was like, that fire truck, it's going to explode.
I haven't even wanted to see what might expire.
Yeah, you might go ahead and take a look.
At that 9,000 accounts, it's like, what are you doing there? Are you trying to? I mean, you're trying to summarize something into 9,000 different parts?
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't know how you summarize with that.
You want enough detail that it's easy enough to pick up those numbers, but not so overwhelming that you couldn't find something wrong if you.
Yeah. Imagine if somebody put something in the wrong account.
I live in fear of that a lot, Ken.
And then, and on that point, there's some stuff we're trying to do so that our two sides of the hall match at a high level. So reconciliation, currently reconciliation is very manual process. And so the hope is this would make it a little bit more efficient and, I guess, glaring if that did happen.
Yep.
Then it's just a matter of figuring it out. That's the.
Yeah. So are you, are you defining each account as you go, like this is what should go in this account? This is appropriate for that account?
So it's broken into a structure that, that like, if you wanted to see like what every entity got in, in, all of our mill levy fund that got in their mill levies for this year, you could pull that in a single report. Right now, but sorted into, you'd have to take each account and say,
Yes.
Fire District 1F got this many dollars in, so.
Go to Excel and add them up and.
Yeah.
Very many.
Very manual.
Yeah.
And, yeah, in our, to that point, our officers will be here next week and I think they'll like to see that change as well. Because whatever we're doing manually, they're checking manually as well.
This is, this is just an example of where the clerk's office is at at this point. For expenditures, it's fluid based on what Christie comes up with, but you can see it.
Yeah.
Space is pretty extensive.
Anybody who's interested in running for treasurer, use a look at this to figure out whether or not you can decipher it. It might be your first interview question. How many parts is, do those accounts responsible for financially? All of this. Very hard job.
But I appreciate that it's a great effort. You'd all allow me to try to do all sides of the question.
Maybe one of those, be careful what you ask. You might.
Yeah.
Does that anything else? I appreciate it.
Thanks, Christie. Thank you, Christie. Is Jim out there?
I didn't realize I could do.
He's walking over to the sheriff's office right now. Does the town council have any reports for us today? Reports, I'm here.
Good to see you.
Start.
Good to see you as well. Good to be seen. Your new water tower's up and operational? It is. Everything is going smoothly at the moment. Just a typical processes of, like you guys are going through right now, is getting things lined up and getting everything accounted for and all the budgeting and everything else going where it belongs and all the giggles.
Yeah.
That was the 16th Street project.
It's going.
There was a little lull there. Oh, did you answer? Was it no comment?
We did have our couple of trees fall down by McGuire's that have been under debate by the owner of McGuire's, but that's about the only thing.
Have they given you guys any updates on when the blacktop's going down? Because they're still pouring curb and gutter, which has to be done first and approaches and all that.
Correct. And they've been, I was down there this weekend and they are getting a lot of the curb and gutters done and they are getting progress at least. I haven't heard an update yet. Tabitha will be here for the 11 o'clock when the sheriff's talking as well for the update with the MOU at the county. So we'll have more updates on that, but I haven't heard anything recently.
I just seen concrete pumper truck there for a while. You know, when they're doing that, basically that ramp approach for
Yes.
going up over the viaduct and whatnot.
Also those storms that we've had recently and the water hitting the ground and causing some things and the wind blowing. And some kind of, definitely mother nature conflicts as well.
It is that time of year.
It is indeed. And it's Wyoming.
Yeah.
Well, when you're pouring concrete about that thickness, there's nothing worse than having the ground wet underneath and sunshine up above and wind.
Yeah.
That is tough, tough, tough.
And that's why.
It doesn't cure the way you want it to.
No.
And you can't control that.
But the blessing right now is we are getting moisture.
Yeah.
So there's gives and takes on everything involved in that. Now, the give is we're getting enough moisture. The take is we're not getting 16th done as fast as we want to. It's a balance.
Yeah.
And I'll, personally, I'll take the moisture.
Oh, yeah.
Do you have a estimated completion date?
I have not heard anything changed. We're still on track for the end of the month allegedly.
Which year?
End of October allegedly.
Which year?
Ian, you might be at office by then.
But at least you'll have a nice road to drive on.
You're going back out of town?
Yes.
What's your water tower? You guys are, water's coming out of it and people are.
No complaints yet.
Well, good.
Which is a plus in itself.
Yeah. How long's that been online?
Couple of weeks.
Okay.
About a week and a half. It's, I mean, it's doing what it's supposed to be doing right now. I haven't heard any yelling or cussing or I haven't gotten any phone calls yet.
Well, it's a good thing when a project gets in and it works.
I haven't got called down in the street or anything, so. Then again, I'm still the new councilman, so a lot of folks don't know who I am to yell at me yet.
It won't take long.
Thanks, though.
Usually it's the new guy that gets all the calls. So again, usually it's the new guy that gets all the calls.
The funny part is the ladies in the court, all the county, yeah, town hall, keep my business cards on the desk. I hand out to people. Now, you can call him. Phone hasn't rang that yet.
Does your business card say complaint department?
You probably should. It's the new guy. Maybe they've heard about my tax and diplomacy.
Your what?
Ian, is your tongue bleeding? I think you bit down hard on that one.
I have.
One item we did have for executive session at the very end. We can cover real quick. I hate to do that.
Yeah.
Everybody, it's up to you, but.
That's what I was thinking about.
11:30 spot.
Yeah, we can do that because we've got.
That's, that's my version. Perhaps put something on there and then.
No, not at all. How guys, how good are you guys loading cattle trucks? Pretty good? We might ask you to step out for a second. And take care of the, some of the stuff at the 11:30 spot right now. I move to call for an executive session. Personnel personnel.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the executive session.
I'm mayor.
Actually, you know what I'm gonna do?
Well, thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Like you count on your box, like have sensory.
My Australian shepherd is wonderful, but he's with me all the time.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Hopefully Jim's out.
Yeah.
They're working. They're doing good.
We'll sit where we were.
Sure.
All of the shops.
All the rest of them.
Jessica.
There's two there.
No.
Sit there.
Sit back here.
Pretend that these two...
Back there.
You're gonna have some...
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, you sit there. We'll.
Pretend that these two.
You gotta sit there.
I'm sorry, huh? Nope. You're my. Thank you. Let's be. I'm in my bathroom. Okay. I'm deep. Jerry Hunter.
What? Text him.
Send me messages.
There he is. Morning, Jim.
Good morning, Jim.
We get to end today.
That's my fault. I totally lost.
What do you have for us today, Jim?
Well, just two things. Updates, um, a whole, I mean, I shouldn't say not a whole lot going on. Getting sprinklers done, you know, getting preparing for winter. I do have a few things that I would like to give you. So this first one is a quote.
Did you?
For parking lot striping. We've been looking for somebody to strike these parking lots. For quite a while. And like, we found this, this company and they came up last Friday and with that and gave me this quote, so this will do, um, the sheriff's. That's how parking lot, parking lot back here, the library and then just patching up this new handicap lot, so everything's painted at the same time. So. That's. Um, how much is the quote? Sorry.
Isn't that a committee, courthouse maintenance?
Yes. He said there's still time to do it, um, this fall. In the past, we've done it ourselves with rattlet cans. So that's.
Jim, with the budget, we might be to the point where rattlet cans are a very useful option.
I.
They seriously enamel.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, uh. On, on the courthouse or the maintenance line item budget. I will say that I don't think that's Jim's fault in any way.
No, not at all.
About thirty-six thousand was the HVAC issue on second floor. So, um, anyway.
Yeah, this is not a reflection of you, this is a reflection of everything else.
So. Yeah, I don't think you could take it. I wouldn't think you would take it out of capo construction. I don't feel like you would. I think we'll be finding that line later too, but, um, that was just something I wanted to bring to you and get your thoughts on it. And if we wait until spring to do it, I'm fine with that. If you want us to do it with rattlet cans, we can do that.
We should leave the cost, you buy that much paint.
So when we done.
Or a roller.
I'm not sure. Uh, when we done this one out here, just this one, we went through like six cases of paint.
At what expense?
I can't answer that, I don't remember. It's been probably three years since we done it.
Well, I'm even thinking about a can of enamel.
So.
You know, I'm not sure how much a can of paint costs, but you with the roller. I don't know, Jim, that's, it might be a way to.
What's the difference in how long it lasts if you do it?
So he said his paint would, um, last about three years.
And so last time you did this with rattlet cans?
When we do rattlet cans, it lasts about six, eight months.
That's, I mean, we were using the wrong thing, we're paying for paint, the wrong paint, I don't know.
It, uh, I used parking lot striping paint, but yeah.
Yeah, by the can.
But, so that's what I helped for that one.
More than you got like a temperature and thickness and everything else, so.
Yeah. I don't know. Either way, if you're not, that's, so you choose your words carefully, Jim. He came in and said, we don't have very much going on, but we like three thousand dollars. I know, I know, I'm just giving you grief. I understand.
Here, I have a lot going on.
I know, I do. I know, I know.
How long's the quote due for?
Um, he really didn't tell me. I would assume it's. I don't know, I can find that out and send you, shoot you guys an email. Yeah, that's what you would want, but.
Like, maybe we at least put it off till spring and then decide to do it.
Absolutely, we covered up the snow and ice.
Yeah.
I looked at that length that you sent me on that product.
Yes.
Never used that product.
So.
Not saying it's good or bad, but what I did look at.
Yeah.
It had some background to it.
That was through the roof, isn't it?
Yeah.
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 Yeah, that's the last American. I found another company, um, that we can get a little cheaper that's, um, backed by a seven-year warranty. It's, uh, called Blackjack. It's still the last, last America, um, stuff. I don't know why I only printed one, but that's kind of what that stuff is.
And this is for the roof out in the arena?
Yes.
Yeah.
For that front half, yep.
Cause that's been probably for quite a few years.
Yes, it has. We've been up there and we've dabbed every screw hole, every screw and it just.
Can you tell where it's leaking from?
No, uh, when Ryan with Fisher stopped by and looked at it, he did give me a quote and I think I told you guys it was like sixty-five or sixty-eight hundred dollars for him to put basically the same thing on. So then I got to look and then this is, I know.
That's why I was telling you, I was just giving you grief, cause you do, right after you do that, you do this, you go, we can take that on. So I, I do appreciate that, Jim.
That problem part of that roof, what's the slope on that?
Might be the problem part of the roof is the slope, the entire slope, yeah.
I think, I can't.
With any metal roof, if you get a slope of less than four to one, when you, you know, like a four pitch, when you get a slope less than that, where that metal overlaps is a problem.
Right. Yeah, it's not much of a pitch.
That's what I thought.
On that, on that piece.
Cause them roofs are made to shed water, not to hold it, you know, and so any, anything you can do to get it off of there quicker.
Right.
Is better.
Yeah, when she gave me that, when Ryan gave me his quote and I went to look at this, you know, it's like seventeen hundred bucks for us to buy the material and then our time. It's, um, and we can paint it on or mop it on, you know.
It's mopped on or sprayed on?
Um, this brand here is rolled on or mopped on, yeah.
You dump a gallon and roll it on, maybe, is what happens.
So.
So you'd be twenty-seven gallons?
Um, we figured fifteen.
Okay.
Fifty, no. Yeah, cause those are four point seven five gallons, ten buckets, so we didn't need it, twelve buckets.
You gotta be, you couldn't need to buy a shaker.
Run off square foot coverage?
Uh, two hundred and thirty square foot is what that bucket will cover.
That's what you say it'll cover.
Yeah. I don't have the number of square footage on that roof with me. I grabbed as long as.
No, we're good.
So that, that would basically cover the entire roof?
Yep. Yes. So I'll ask them, I talked to you guys about projects, upcoming projects and what different departments, um, we're asking. I'll give this to you in just a few. And these are in no order. I think the, the public health and, um, the flooring, they still have some nineteen seventies carpet in there. Um, in the offices and in the exam rooms. It's been stretched twice since I've been here. Yeah, it's, it's just, it's worn out. Um, we're getting some ransels in it. We're thinking tripping hazards or anybody, but especially the elderly. So, um, this point is to do all of the offices. So.
In the, in Coleman, just with public health?
Just on the public health end of it, yeah.
That carpet that's in there, some of that, is it moved down carpet, carpet squiers?
It's all glued down.
Okay.
No carpet squiers, it's just.
This stuff can't go over the top of that?
No.
Okay.
No, this is a vinyl planking, life proof. Yeah, life proof.
How do they intend on doing it? Or is this, is this your guys' estimate?
This is what it would cost us to do. Yeah, just materials.
Yeah, for, for us to do.
So we'll just pick an office, move it out, do it.
That's right.
Yeah. Move them back in, grab the next one.
Yeah.
So this one might be a little further out, just because this is the beginning of flu season, they might have a little more traffic in some of those.
And they don't want the smell of the glue, I'm sure, you know?
Yeah.
That'll be a problem. Making everybody have a health sick.
So this, this would come out of capital construction?
Yes, yep. All, all four of these would come out of capital construction. The next two are both over at the library. The makerspace room and the magazine corner, um, where the magazines are currently, uh, we would be moving that to a different corner and just kind of tidying that up. Screwing it up a little bit and then making, uh, the makerspace and I believe they're not gonna tell me what went right around, but they've got that grant and that grant is just to pay for the material in, not the the room itself, just the stuff in.
Right.
The equipment.
Equipment.
So that would be.
My understanding was that the foundation was willing to pay for the other work.
The construction of it? Okay, that was a bit confirmed now, Julie, but that was my, what I took away.
So then this one wouldn't come out of capital construction?
Right, yeah, if the foundation is.
Second, the library makers.
Well, it would initially, then when we get the check.
Yeah.
I mean.
The foundation wants to pay for which portion of that?
The construction on the makerspace room.
Oh.
The thirty-five eighty.
The labor.
Thirty-five eighty? Yeah.
Okay, okay.
So basically, the general funds investment would be the time of maintenance, that material of the room would be foundation, the equipment would be the grant.
Then you'll confirm that one?
Yep.
Library.
Yep. And once I confirm that, then I'll, and then I'll email you guys and. And then the, um, the last one I have for that one is, uh, the district courtroom. The jury room upstairs has no, um, storage. Nowhere to.
Put the coffee pot, the whatever for the jurors when they have jury trials? This is the same as the other one? This, this is treated the same?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Yes, thank you, sorry. Yeah. So, um, they would like to have us put in some, um, a countertop and some storage. So you'll see, um, attached to that quote, there's just some box cabinets to go in there. Obviously, I would ask Mona for her bless young colored top, that type of thing, um, if you guys approve of doing this.
And is there adequate room in there to install, put them installed?
Yes. Yeah, so the, the pictures and the, of the cabinets is what we would put in there.
You're talking about nine and a half feet?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
And that one would definitely come out of the, um, construction.
Construction.
I, I don't like.
Out of capital construction.
And the only thing that's undecided is the type of countertop?
Right. Color of the cabinets and countertop. We can get like four different colors and, and these, but.
So the only thing that could change the price would be the type of countertop?
Yes.
Those cabinets prefinished?
Yes.
Hampton bay, we got, how many people?
Uh, Menards.
Menards, that's right.
I think, wait on the painting stripe.
Till spring.
Yeah.
I'm good with the library project, if, if on the library, foundation is willing to.
Okay, sure, yeah. Okay.
I just, I think, uh, my ability created the flooring, public health is big, the only concern is.
Uh, yes, I agree. I, I completely agree.
Move forward on that one. Cause I think you guys are all right.
Yes, I think that's a good idea, I do see it, same thing. The thing I'm worried about is the fumes and stuff like that in public health. I'm not sure how you deal with that, whether it's fans or, I'm not sure, you know? I think it was pretty sticky.
Yeah.
Did that water from that HVAC create a carpet problem that wasn't there before?
Um, no.
No?
No.
Okay.
We got right in there, um, and shampooed it and put disinfectant down and cleaned it all up and that's, that's what's tight.
Yeah, I was just, I was more just thinking along the lines of, you know,
And it's actually.
As opposed to anything else.
Right, um, and that was, that's still on the, the good portion of the good carpet that's over there, it wasn't on the inside.
Good, I'm so glad that we didn't.
But I, I think we're talking about. Been there longer than we have.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know. I've not heard of carpet being worn out, I believe it.
I'm, I'm sure that was probably in the seventies when it was put in, when they done that remodel.
Yeah.
So.
Not bad for fifty years, or about a year.
Yeah. Yeah.
That really isn't a bad.
Um, what are your thoughts on, uh, the district court courtroom?
Maybe heavens, up service. Subservice, yeah.
Yeah. Is that something you wanna put off total, maybe spring or? Look at it, yeah, closer to the end of the budget year?
Yeah, I think let's get the public health taken care of.
Yeah.
Okay.
Once we get that done, we'll look at this.
Another thing I'm looking at too, in the back of my mind going forward is these projects versus where you're gonna have to spend some time in some of them pods.
Right, right.
Yeah, because that's.
I was going there next, um.
Okay.
I have been, um, I've talked to Tony a couple times, um, we're, we're gonna get together and go through, do a whole walk through.
A whole walk through looking for all the holes?
Okay, we'll walk through the whole building. Um, and figure out where our number one priority is, where his are, um. We'll get started on that, probably. I'm hoping in the next couple, three weeks, we'll get started on a pod or other.
You know, once you get your feet wet a little bit in the.
Once you get your feet wet a little bit into this, and you know, if you're able to get over there and start addressing some of this stuff in these pods, then that can kind of help him take that off of his plate.
Yep.
So that he can be more successful in that. And, and you can help play a role in that, you know, leading up to that. And that would be very much appreciated by where we're at.
Right, right. So I don't know if he has time with him, but we, he had an inmate or they had an inmate over there over the weekend that ripped both televisions down. Just tore the heck out of things, so that's an expense that will come out of that jail line item as well.
Is he a short term inmate or a long term?
I don't have any idea. I don't ask those questions.
Well, the only reason I ask is because, you know, this guy's done this and he's, you know, scheduled to be there for another year.
We won't be putting anything back in or fixing the televisions or anything until that's. Or they say it's not something that we're gonna fix right away.
Those things need to figure out they're in jail for a reason.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah.
So. We'll keep a, a line on that and then if he's, I don't know. The windows that were broke over there, we did the same thing. We kept a, a line on them and then I think they ended up charging the inmate with a couple of them. So we'll do the same thing with this one. And I'll send it all over to him if he does from there.
How successful is that, do you think?
Right.
Not very high on the list, I don't think.
Yeah.
They're calling paying customers, but they don't.
Yeah.
I know. Anything else, Jim?
So I did ask Jim, I think we need to make a decision on the roof, that Coleman Building, which way to go. And we talked about maybe putting it under Phase Two. Personally, I would not advise that. I don't think we need to pay the general contractor fee. I think Jim, I think Jim's got that ability on that project. Basically, the decision is new roof or the repair. And, and we've got the budget in the Phase Two money. The Phase Two money applies to it, but I don't know if putting it under the GC is necessary.
So what are the options there?
Um, the costs. Different, those are different. The one company wants to replace it. The other company said they would either replace it or fix it, whichever we would like to do. The one that wants to fisher out of Scotts Book will do it either way. They felt like if we just went in and fixed it, put another coating on it, it'd last us another twenty-five years. And I don't have those.
What's the warranty on a new one?
Uh, thirty.
Yeah, and the price difference was what, forty-five, sixty grand?
Yeah, it was, it was huge, yeah. The other company was capital and they wouldn't, they wouldn't look at fixing the roof. They only wanted to.
Yeah, they had all sorts of stuff, but I remember looking through that mid sheet, you know, when they were including and all that. And I said, this isn't fixing a roof, this is reconstructing.
Yes.
Yeah.
You know? It worked, that's the way I looked at it.
Would you guys like me to email you those two quotes back or this?
She wants to.
Priority of it.
Well, I'm.
Is there a water intrusion over there?
It's.
Depends on what we're coming out of the trough.
It has an leak at the last.
If you fix it, we're gonna be dry.
Yeah. Well, and we're leaks, it's only in the hallway, so.
Send us those.
Okay.
I was thinking probably just fix it for about five years where we are right now. Well, then there was just a huge disparity in that.
Fishers.
I, yeah.
You've worked a lot with them, yeah.
Yeah, they're number one since I've been here.
That's right.
They don't, they stand behind it. I don't know how many times we had them come up and work on the library roof and they sort of. Easy to add, let's all.
Are they never had a problem with Ryan standing behind any roof he's put on anything on their bill?
Yeah, I've had a really good look, but then, yeah.
One, one reason we had even discussed the new roof, if you'll remember, is the number of repairs. Was interfering with the sloping, and so we were starting to get pooling on flat roofs. And Commissioner Baker's famous for saying a roof's supposed to shed water, not hold. It's a roof, not a pool.
Yeah, exactly, a roof is not a pool.
That was.
Which is why we have one here.
That was. Cover any part of it?
No.
And then the other part, the HVAC, in order to do any sort of modification in that building, we would need to update HVAC, and I think we need to anyway. I don't know if you've been through there in a while, but well, obviously earlier this year we had a, an issue with. There's others, and so anyway, I think getting an RFP together for either engineering or just basically design build, that's gotta be your direction, which way you wanna go with it. Do you wanna engineer it, design build it?
Yeah.
And then an RFP can be created. The idea was, so Phase Two collection is four point two five million. The budget for this building was four. Two fifty was reserved out for other maintenance, right? And I think that that's pieces that could really benefit from that two hundred and fifty. Because really, Jim can't do anything with the law library or the conference room or anything, any modification until that's figured out.
If you were to get into any kind of a discussion with Ryan, if you could come over here, have a look at it again, lay eyes on it, that kind of thing, concerning the slope issue on a repair versus a tear off re-roof, there's ways that those guys on that style of roof can recreate slope to get rid of the pooling. And I would, I'd meet you guys up there, whatever, whatever it took, you know? Because if it's, if it's holding water now, throwing whatever kind of elastomeric coat you got on it isn't gonna fix that. It'll keep it from coming in, but it won't keep the pooling, you know? So anyway, if you want, I would do that. Going forward. So yeah, get us those numbers again.
Okay.
Do you guys have any more questions for this?
No, thank you.
All righty, thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
What did you say, an HVAC? Design builder, engineer?
I think we wanna look at those numbers.
Yeah, oh, the numbers, yeah. Sound like we made a decision, we were just asking for information.
Okay.
Sorry, I was, I don't know, typing something else.
Here we have Catherine Stevens on our agenda this morning.
Morning. Sorry, I'm a little froggy.
It's that time of year.
Yeah, well, it just happens to me or whatever. Oh, that, I'm gonna get distracted if you put that right away, 'cause I'm gonna talk about that last, yeah.
Okay.
But thank you, you're right on top of it.
Just to what you told, what you emailed me?
Yes, thank you. Okay, so I wanted to keep you guys in the loop about stuff that I'm finding and, and hearing and, and it's, I think, without, without exception, it's new stuff regarding the, regarding our preparedness as a county for when Next Era applies for the wind project. So also I wanted to just say right off the bat that the whole reason, I mean, I think that maybe you guys are prob, maybe you're already tired of it. I don't know, but I think it's super important, and I think you guys would agree that we be proactive and not reactive. So this is our time to prepare for their application. Next Era has been preparing for like over a decade for the wind farm and, and they've done so, you know, kind of covertly. I don't mean to ascribe malice to it, but like they've done it quietly. So most citizens didn't hear about it until the open house over the summer, so. I have been asking people around Wheatland specifically what they know about the project. And I talked with about, over the weekend, I talked with about forty or fifty people, I would say. Only three of them were in favor of the wind project. And when I opened up the conversations, I, I just was very like, I just said, hey, have you heard about the wind project that, you know, they're trying to put in East of Chugwater? And that was really, so I, it could go either way, you know, they didn't necessarily feel like I was on one side or the other. So only three of them were like really strongly in favor. Everybody else was kind of tentative about it. I would say about thirty percent of the people hadn't even heard about it. Which I think is, that's a big deal. It's gonna, it would have a huge effect on the whole county. So more people should know about it. A lot of people felt that it was hopeless to speak up. I encouraged them to, to speak up regardless of, if they think it's hopeless or not. Some people said that they would move away from Platte County if turbines came here because of their experiences elsewhere. One of the most outspoken residents that I met said that he used to work with wind energy and he would never want to live here. I did, regarding previous meetings, I can't remember now which meetings it was. There was this desire for, I don't remember if it was planning and zoning or if it was you guys, for more balance, like where are the pro-wind arguments and the papers put out by the wind industry? I found a really good paper, which I think I sent you guys like over a month ago, so if I need to resend it, I'm happy to do so. It's kind of lengthy, but the last fifteen pages of it are just references to scientific studies and whatnot. So it's not actually as long as it looks, but it's still pretty long. It's a paper, I'll just refer to it as, it's by Jerry Punch and Richard James. One is an audiologist, the other is a professor. This is the guy I mentioned to you guys, that he spoke on the floor, the Senate floor in Kansas in twenty twenty-two. Really good paper. He talks about a lot of the pro-wind arguments. He uses some of the papers that they rely on for their, I guess, some of their talking points. And he, he goes through it really meticulously. So just for the sake, you know, if you guys wanna come back to this, I don't know, I know Malcolm takes notes and stuff, but specifically in that page or in that paper, pages six through nine, page fifteen, page twenty-two, and pages forty-four through forty-eight, he refers to, he refers to the papers put out by the wind industry or, you know, people hired by the wind industry. He also talks about the A-weighting, which I emailed you guys already about. I did look through Next Era's application. I didn't, I haven't read all twenty-five hundred pages of it, but I did search through it. And just for reference, they do use A-weighting, which is the, they own, the, A-weighting is just for audible sound. So when they're, you know, they're not actually referring to infrasound or low frequency noise at all in their application. Which is what I would expect, but I wanted to check. So they're, they're referring to A-weighted sound throughout their application. I wanna read a, it's very short compared to the whole paper. No, it is short. I really appreciate this, these two guys, Punch and James, they, they have this approach not to be captured by either the pro-wind or the anti-wind. Not to get, you know, we shouldn't be captured by either of those arguments. We should have like a third option, which is like pro-safety, pro-health. I totally agree with that. I'm not ideologically opposed to wind, as I've mentioned in the past. So I'm gonna just read that, it's on page fifty-four. They say, based on all the evidence presented, which of course, they're talking about the majority of the paper up to this point, our fundamental view is that the controversy surrounding AHEs or adverse health events should not be polarized into two groups consisting of either pro-wind or anti-wind factions, but rather one in which there's room for a third, pro-health perspective. Essentially, the pro-wind view is that industrial wind turbines should be installed wherever feasible. That definitive scientific research is lacking to indicate that turbines cause adverse health events, and that if you can't hear it, you can't feel it. The anti-wind view is that industrial wind turbines should not be installed anywhere because wind is not an economically viable source of renewable energy, and that all government subsidies and development efforts should end, and that what we can't see or see can, I'm sorry, what we can't hear can hurt us. A pro-health view is that there is enough anecdotal and scientific evidence to indicate that infrasound or low frequency noise from industrial wind turbines causes annoyance, sleep disturbance, stress, and a variety of other adverse health events to warrant citing the turbines at distances sufficient to avoid harm, such harmful effects, which without proper citing, occur in a substantial percentage of the population. That view holds that we can't, what we can't hear can hurt some of us, and that the precautionary principle must be followed in citing industrial wind turbines if such health risks are to be avoided. Industrial-scale wind turbines should not be located near people's homes, educational and recreational facilities and workplaces. It is our belief that the bulk of the available evidence justifies a pro-health perspective. It is unacceptable to consider people living near wind turbines as collateral damage while this debate continues. And I'm not suggesting that you guys have that view, that we're collateral damage, but I just think he has a really good perspective. It's not, and it's not radical or fringy, you know? Okay, so I wanted to, I, I researched, I'm always researching, but I researched and found that there, that Next Era actually built a wind farm in twenty fifteen in Calhoun, Colorado. I don't know if you guys know about that one. I didn't know about it. It's a small town, it's a little bit bigger than Chugwater, but still kind of the same vibe. Within a few months, residents there had hired an independent acoustical engineer, Robert Rand, who came out and took infrasound and vibration measurements in their homes. We actually, we have his full, his official forty-page report, which I think is super valuable. And did I email that to you, Malcolm?
I believe so.
Okay, I'll email it to you. Is there a way for that report to be, for them to be able to refer to it? Sorry. Like I said, because of the fact that it's the same, there's so many things that are the same. Very similar community size, very similar, it was an agricultural community, Next Era, same company. Their turbines there, the turbines at this, I think it's Golden West project, are a little bit smaller than the ones that they are proposing to build here, but a lot of similarities. And so it's actual data from homes that are cited. It's like half a mile, a mile and a half, and two miles from turbines. So it's like, it's the information. It's like if we could peek into the future and see what would happen here, there's no reason to think it would be any different here. I really appreciate that 'cause it's hard and fast data. So that official report, which, because of the fact that Next Era has, you know, they've, they've been involved, I didn't know this until I started researching it, they've been involved in at least two lawsuits at Calhoun, in Calhoun, Colorado. It might come up under El Paso County, 'cause that's also, that's the county. So they know that this stuff is there, like they're aware of it. It's not in their best interest to talk about it or to refer to it, but they know that it's there. They know that, that the infrasound causes problems for some of the people living near their turbines. So they're, they're, they're a business, their priority is money. So that, I guess, isn't surprising. I, I would be naive to think that that wouldn't be their priority, but obviously that shouldn't be our priority here. Our priority should be what's best for the county. And I understand money's part of that, but it's not the whole picture, so. I did actually talk with an official at El Paso County yesterday. She was very kind to talk to me for about, probably thirty minutes. She emphasized that Next Era's first project there, 'cause they're trying to do a second one. I keep saying first project. It's 'cause they're right now trying to go for a second one. She mentioned that the county wasn't really prepared because as a county, and none of the same commissioners are still there as were there at the time, but. So it was like, I think she's the only person that's still in the local government. It's been ten years, so. I'm not saying that like, oh, they all got kicked out. I'm just saying it's been turnover. Anyway, they weren't really prepared. They were viewing it just as a private property issue, private property rights. They weren't really, let's see, what's the term she used? They weren't evaluating the pro, the project based on, oh, I think I saw it there.
I think I do find.
Cool. They weren't evaluating it based on the approval criteria for what was in the best interest of the county. And she said, she was being very diplomatic, which I appreciate, but she said they will handle it very differently this time. They're gonna handle it with a hundred percent transparency. I think they've seen what can happen. It ripped their community apart, which is really, really sad. The participating landowners were seen as villains. The non-participating landowners who were close by either, you know, abandoned their homes or were able to actually sell their homes and move. It's just, it was horrible for their whole community. It was just devastating. And to hear the, I mean, yeah, the audiologist, or not, the acoustical engineer, Robert Rand, who wrote the report that Malcolm just found, he also talked about how sad it was. who wrote the report that Malcolm just found, um, he also talked about how sad it was when he was there, that the community that was so close knit was ripped apart. Um, I just think that's like a terrible thing, for something like that to leave that in its wake. Um, that, I think, is a cautionary tale, and, and we have the opportunity now to prevent that from happening. Um, uh, let's see, how much time do I have? How much time have I been talking? Because I don't want to not talk about the, um, okay. Um, I will mention on that, in that report, the Robert Rand Acoustical Engineers Report, page three is a good summary of what he did and what the whole report is about. Page five shows a map of the homes where, where he took these measurements, which I think is pretty useful. And page twelve, um, shows where the infrasound from Next Era's Golden West Wind Farm falls on the, what he calls the nauseogenic range of, because it's a lot like, well, that's like what causes, when you, when you're on a boat, that's the motion sickness when it stimulates your vestibular system. It's like your body's getting the signals and it's on a boat rocking around because of the movement, but you're not moving, so it's very disorienting. Um, anyway, so page three, page five, page twelve, but the whole, all forty pages are really pertinent information that we should definitely have on, on record here in Platt County. Um, so does that work, like, can you just put that in there as a matter of record? Um, so yeah, Next Era has seen that, they can learn from the misfortunes of Calhan. Um, okay, I, I did make a drawing, so now you can put the yellow drawing up, which, uh, I, uh, so, sorry, it looks very, very like juvenile, but, um, I did, I, here, I'll pass it out. I have, I just, uh, thank you, Lucinda, for being willing to take these copies for me at the last minute. Those little houses. Okay, so the key should be pretty useful there for you. Oh, good, you have it on that too. Well, um, so basically, as you can see, this is a mock-up, okay, of a, of a sample place. You notice the, the dotted line is the property boundary, um, the project boundary, I should say. The green houses are participating landowners, and the red houses are non-participating landowners.
Which way is north?
Uh, up, like the top, yeah. Um, so, let me get back to my notes.
You say these red houses, they're habitat, are they, people live there?
People live there, yeah. All right, let me get back to my notes here. Okay, so, um, in this map, I want you to, I'm going to ask some rhetorical questions. The, uh, green, the, the green property, okay, the, which is multiple people own all that. It's just lumped into what is the project, you know, what's leased land leased to the wind company. Um, in that scenario, whose property rights are the most explicitly defined? So, the people outside the dotted line or the people inside the dotted line? Uh, I won't make you answer. The people inside the dotted line, they have contracts, you know, that they've negotiated with the wind company. So they've had an opportunity, whether they've been, you know, I think that contracts are kind of predatory. I think that they're not very good, but it's not my opinion that matters. It's, they still had a chance to work this, you know, to negotiate these contracts. So their property rights are, um, more secure, there's more data or more, um, documentation, you know, stating what they are, explaining what they are. The people outside the range of the property or the project, um, they don't have any such, um, contracts to protect their various property rights. And you can see from, uh, the little blue, kind of wavy, uh, lines are fiberglass shedding, but of course, that's like wherever the wind goes, that's where they go. And if it's a really windy day, they go farther, so that's highly variable. Then the infrasound is like, um, you know, the orange is two miles from a turbine, the yellow is three miles, the green is four miles. Um, you can see that those effects, which are very real effects, are scientifically measurable, um, they're medically significant, they're real things. Um, they actually extend beyond the project, and they extend into other people's neighboring properties. So this becomes, I think we've been looking at the private property rights, we've been looking at that, and that's been the big thing, like, oh, well, this is about private property rights. It is, it actually is, it really is, but we've been kind of looking at it upside down. Um, if you look at all the people outside the project, there are many more of them, um, and their private property rights are being infringed upon, uh, in measurable ways. Um, I, I will mention as far as the infrasound goes, uh, according to the, uh, acoustical report, um, down in Calhan, uh, one of the places where people were having the most symptoms was at two miles. Um, so I don't know why that is, maybe that family was very susceptible. But two miles is still within the range of infrasound. Um, there wasn't anybody measured at three miles in that particular report. Um, so, uh, he said that at least in Calhan, the green line, which is four miles from a turbine, uh, indicates where some of these people were able to find relief from the most, from the worst of their symptoms. For example, they were able to sleep, their headaches went away. Um, so for some people, that was enough, just getting four miles away. Um, so let's see, I think, uh, oh, I see, there's one more quote I wanted to read, and then I think I'm about done. Um, this one's about, uh, some of the scientific studies, this, they, like I said, they're very thorough in this paper, Punch and James. Um, they talk about the different kinds of scientific studies that, um, are approvable in like a court of law, like what kind of constitutes a good scientific study when you're talking about medical stuff, you know, pollution, people's, uh, medical reactions to it. Um, so the best, one of the best kinds of case studies is called a case crossover study, where you have people that are exposed to a stimulus, and then the stimulus goes away, which is exactly, and then it happens repeatedly, so you could measure if their symptoms correspond with stimulus, which is exactly what happens in the case of wind turbines. So, uh, he writes, "The wind industry has unwittingly engaged individuals and families worldwide in a series of quasi-empirical studies for many years without obtaining informed consent from unenrolled subjects, typically by downplaying any concerns about potential health impacts. The outcomes from these experiments offer some of the strongest evidence available that there is a causative link between wind turbine noise, which includes infrasound, and, um, adverse health events in some individuals." So basically, on wind, on days where it's too windy or not windy enough, and the turbines aren't functioning, people's symptoms go away. Um, that's like, you couldn't ask for a better scientific study than that. So, anyway, um, I hope that this map is useful in terms of the private property issue. Um, I do think it's a private property issue, and those of us who are, you know, outside of the project boundary, our, our private property rights are not protected by a, a contract, they're protected by, uh, Platt County. And so that's why, and I'll be bringing this as well to planning and zoning and letting them know, because I think this is obviously, you know, primarily, they're the ones outlining what the county, um, residents' rights are. Um, so I, obviously, I disagree with what, um, you know, Marty said several meetings ago, where he said, "If you want rights, if you want your private, if you want your, was it, your rights protected, move into town." Um, which obviously, I don't think that's the position of the county, I would hope that's not the position of the county. I hope he was just speaking off the cuff. But, anyway, um, so yeah, I hope that's useful. Thanks, you guys.
Do you guys have any questions for Stevens? Have you been presenting this stuff to the Wyoming Department of Health? Because they're going to.
I absolutely have, I went and met in person. Yes, um, I went and met in person with, uh, Ally Harris, uh, down in Cheyenne, and I talked to her about this.
I, I think that's one difference between Wyoming and Colorado is, Colorado doesn't have the industrial site access that Wyoming has.
Right, yeah.
And so our process is, first industrial siting, to cite these where there's all those state agencies that weigh in, and if there are legitimate concerns and, um, problems with it, they can make recommendations as to those.
Yes, yeah.
And as far as I'm concerned, when it comes to health, they're the, the authority in Wyoming. Um, we're not experts in it at all.
Great.
So I think the recommendations that they make after it comes out of the industrial siting council is pretty much where I'm going to go.
Yeah, yeah, Ally was very, uh, interested in all of this, so I hope that.
I'm glad you're getting it.
Yeah, I hope so, I mean, I hope that, because they, they can only advise, you know, they can't really like, um, they can give recommendations, that's the extent of their power.
Their recommendation as far as permitting process.
Yeah, yeah, so.
You know, however, however sad it was that, you know, the community in Calhan, because I know where that is, that's off of Highway twenty-four northeast of Colorado Springs, I know exactly where that is.
Yeah.
Um, splitting the community, a power plant out there did the same thing to this community all those years ago. And I watched people who had known each other their whole life, went to high school together, graduated together, blah, 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 served on the RDA board together, took different directions in it. Um, I didn't like it then, of course, I was a lot younger, but I thought, wow, here we go.
Yeah.
Um, so, that wasn't good. Division of a community isn't good regardless, you know, of the outcome either way, it's just not.
Right, yeah.
Thank you. Here we have Terry Baker. Morning.
Good morning. I appreciate the chance to get to speak to you guys and to the audience. Um, and I guess, I wasn't going to talk about this, but, uh, what Jeff just said about the power plant, that has a very small footprint compared to what this Chudwater Energy Project's going to be.
You're forgetting Gray Rocks.
What's that?
You're forgetting Gray Rocks.
About who?
They flooded an entire valley for it.
What is it, I don't know about that story.
Gray Rocks reservoir.
Gray Rocks reservoir.
Oh.
Yeah.
Okay.
Gray Rocks reservoir is the footprint of the power plant.
How many acres is that?
More than two, less than ten thousand. I don't know. Do you know where Gray Rocks is?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, well, anyway, I, I appreciate the time that I get to speak. I'm actually a resident of Goshen County, but I'm also a resident of the Chudwater community, and I've lived there basically my whole life. So, um, Dennis and my land in Goshen County is a mile from where this project boundary is, and so we're very, very close to it. They were going to come into Goshen County, and they've pulled out. And I know in speaking with the Goshen County Commissioners, they feel it's because their regs were strong enough. I don't know if that's, I don't know if that's true or not, but in speaking with them, that's what they think. So I can only encourage you to make your regs much, much, much stronger than they are. And I've been coming to the zoning and planning meetings, um, I've been going to meetings in Goshen County. I know there's people over there willing to help, if you want their help, you know, the people over there are willing to help. Um, because basically, uh, to what I've seen of your regs, they're basically the state regs, maybe with a few upgrades. So, um, and you guys still have the authority to put a moratorium on all of this until you get better regs. And we don't have one regulation anywhere in the state for the best, for the battery energy storage system. So that has got to be addressed, and I know you're working on it, but, um, and I know at the state level, I think they were trying to get a five-year moratorium on everything until everybody in the whole state can get the act together on better regs. Okay, so anyway, um, okay, I, I want to, I, I know I sent you guys the planning and zoning a couple videos, but I haven't sent you these, so I won't, they're not long. I want to just send you, um, because I think people think there's nothing wrong with any of this, and that these, uh, and I'm against all of it, just upfront, I'm against every part of this. Um, but I will just show you this, a couple of them, and if I can get it going. It's, it's about the wind part of it, if I can get it to play. So this is, this is a wind tower on fire, so it does happen.
It's like Fourth of July.
Yes, yep, there's one of them. Ah, if I can get out of it. Technology is not my strong suit. I don't know if I can get to it. And it's thinking. The other one was when the blades were going so fast, they just dispersed. And they went flying, and you could see the horses running by. So it does happen, they're not, they are not. Okay, so anyway, I am totally, totally, totally against this Chudwater Energy Project, and I have been from the very beginning. But today, that, um, what I want to talk about is, um, absentee landowners. So, and how, and how they.
I've got a question, where do you live?
Goshen County.
Okay.
I own land in Platt County.
So that makes you an absentee landowner. Yes?
To this project, to me, I'm not in a bad.
No, I'm just, I'm just pointing out something that occurred to me, if that was right or wrong, I don't know.
Well, you need to come to this meeting. I am an absentee landowner as, as a, if you mean, I'm here from Goshen County.
A resident in Goshen County, talking about an issue in land that is in a different county.
And I own land in Platt County as well, I live in Goshen County.
So have you always been against wind energy?
I think the technology's not there. And I guess, uh, you know, if it's, if it would be more reliable.
So have you ever signed a wind energy lease?
Our family has, mhm, and the Eagles kept, kept that project from coming in. And so if the, if the Eagles kept that project from coming in years ago, oh, we finally decided to play. Why is it this time around that if, if our ranch wanted to list to them, we could? And that makes no sense to me, no sense to me at all, Steve.
I was just curious, you said you've been against it from the very beginning, but you have signed a wind lease.
Yes, years ago, yes. So I will say, yes.
Change between then and.
Yes, I've learned about all of this, I've learned, yeah, right. Before, I understood, you are very correct, our ranch did sign, and it was with Next Era. But now that I've learned all, all of the ill-health effects and how unreliable it is, how inefficient all of this is.
And, and who made that decision to? Who made that decision that you're opposed to wind now?
I did.
So your neighbors didn't force you to make that decision, or the government didn't force you to make that decision? You made that decision?
I made that decision.
Okay.
Yep, all right, so anyway, let's see. Did I tell you one, Malcolm? Okay, all right, so I guess what I want to talk about is the orange, I just want to go down in the map. So the orange on this map, uh, to the best of my ability, is I've used Genesis Onyx, I've used the Platt County GIS mapping, I've used the Next Era application. I'm not going to say it's completely a hundred percent perfect, but to the best of my ability, all of the orange are landowners who are absentee landowners.
So what does that say about, what, what's your point about it?
Um, because there's people that live here that.
So what, what makes, what, what's the difference you're trying to show us? That absentee landowners shouldn't have a say in what goes on? Uh, that's where, that's where I think you're going, right?
Yes, yes, they have a huge say on what goes on in this project. But they don't have to live there. So this project has come in and been put on top of a community.
So should we disregard their, that's what I'm trying to, I'm, I assume you're trying to get us to make a decision one way or another, or let, get us to think something?
I would like you to listen to the people who actually live there and will be affected health-wise.
Okay, so, so all of the area shaded in orange, these people do not live in Platt County?
Exactly.
And so we should disregard their, or I don't, I'm, I'm trying to guess what kind of weight you'd like us to put, weight the, the, the opinion that.
The people that live there, and that will have to put up.
Weight anymore?
Yes, exactly.
Okay, so I'm going to go through this with you.
Okay.
You're an absentee landowner telling us that we should put less weight on your opinion, and so directly from that, I should put less weight in what you're telling me right now. You see what I mean?
Sure, it's a gotcha.
Well, that's, I'm trying to, I'm trying to expose the fallacy of what you're saying. You can't make a distinction between people who live there and people who don't, based on, you know, property rights. You own the property because you live on it or not, does not change your right to the property. You see what I mean? I'm going to take your statement with as much gravity as anybody else's because you have some interest in here, right? Would it be fair for me to disregard your opinion right now?
No, not totally.
Exactly, so I'm not going to do that, and I'm, I'm, I'm not going to disregard everybody here that's in orange. Does that sound fair, or would you like me to change my mind about that? You're arguing from a very precarious position.
Yes, that's true. Yes, that's true.
Very well thought out when you ask us to do something like that.
Well, okay. Do you think that people... I guess this would be a question to them. Would they like this? Would they like to live by all of this?
What does it matter? How does that affect... You don't lose property rights by not living on a piece of property. Run that one through a couple of times, and then get back to me.
Okay, all right.
I really would like you to understand that very well. Because what you're asking me is to put less weight on what you're telling me because you don't live in that community. Exactly. You've shown me a distinction. But you've also said you live in Goshen County. And so in Platte County, which is what we are over, right? You're saying that people who do not live in Platte County don't deserve as much attention to the people who do live here. And so if I do what you ask, I'm going to disregard what you're telling me right now and say, because you don't live here...
Because I'm an absentee landowner.
Because you don't live here, I don't have to listen to what you say, which I don't think is right. Don't quote me on that. Misquote me on that. Excuse me. But that's what I'm saying. That's what you're asking us to do.
But I do live within the health concerns parameter of all this.
That may be correct.
And these people don't.
So how do you know where they live?
Because I look them up on all of these different deals.
Okay. So did you go knock on it? That's my point. You can't know for sure, and I can't know for sure. So I'll treat everybody the exact same. If you own property there, you have rights to that property.
And they would have just as much rights as the people who have to put up with all the health issues that this project can bring?
I'm not saying that.
And the toxic gases that might come?
I think we're past this. Why don't you think about that or not? It doesn't make any difference. But I'm not going to change my opinion on how much weight or how much importance I put to someone's opinion based on where they live. Because if I did that, you'd be sitting down right now.
Yeah, because I physically live in Goshen County.
Exactly. And I don't think that's right. For me to make that distinction, to be very clear. I think what you do have to... What you have to say is important, and that's why you're talking to us today. Thank you.
Okay. And I think we all need to be good stewards of the land that God has given us. And I do believe that the people living up in the Chubwater Community where this project is proposed to be might be the endangered species.
Might be. I agree.
Okay. Thanks for letting me speak.
Thank you. Do you guys have any questions?
Yeah, I got a question or two. I've lived close to that area for a deal in my life. Done the same thing your husband did, a wheat farmer. One of the things that I guess I would like some clarification on...
Yes.
Is those are leases right there. Part of anybody's public information. They were signed by you and your sister. One of them was May 2, 2007, signed with Pacific Wind Development LLC. And I'll take questions when I'm done. Another one on July 14, 2011, extended the lease with the same company. June 18, 2008, Little Rose Wind Farm. That was a 35-year lease when that was written. January 19, 2016, Next Era for two meteorological towers. May 22, 2007, PPM Energy Meteorological Towers. And on May 1, 2019, a right-of-way entry to the Voight Ranch, which allows them to go in and do whatever they want to do as far as their studies. So when you say you had a change of heart, when did that happen? And why? Because what it boils down to is for a period of time between '07 and '19, you took their money.
That's true.
But now, to listen to this, everybody in that area is going to die, and everybody's going to get sick, and this is not good for anything.
So what have you done?
And exactly. Exactly. So, you know, this is where I'm... This is where I get a little convoluted, you know, where people will sign these leases and take this money, and now all of a sudden, there's an epiphany that says, bite them, they're the worst thing ever.
Because we've learned.
That's my question.
Because we've learned.
And when did that happen?
I don't know.
I go back even farther than this, Terry. I go back 25 years. Let's go back 25, 28 years. You and your husband were part of a group that was the South Group. Gregor Gertz kind of ran what we called the Northern Group that was pushing to bring wind energy into that area. And it evolved to this. That's my question.
Yeah. When Clipper came through, the bakers, yes, we did want it. But that again is before I understood and learned and researched about all of these so-called green energy companies. They are not. They are not green. But yes, and I'm like, I think Catherine said, the technology isn't here. You know, if they would get something that is renewable, that is efficient...
You see that...
Then I might change my mind.
Efficiency is their business model decision as far as that goes. And I don't want this to be an us and them thing because I don't look at it that way. You know? I mean, I don't see it that way. Because I know my own mother signed leases with Duke or somebody Energy years ago. And then having said that, I don't know, nine or 10 years ago, they came back and wanted to do it again. I said, Mom, not really. So we didn't. But that's just where I'm at personally. But, you know, if my neighbor to the east or somebody like that, if they did, ain't a damn thing I can do about it because they did. Does that make sense? But I just don't want you to think that I'm your enemy because I don't look at it that way.
I have a question for what you just said. So let's say your neighbor did that, but the effects of putting up wind turbine, whatever it is, came in, and it hurt your cattle, or it hurt your children. Then would you have the same attitude?
Catherine, I've got a... Could you... Just because you brought up what... Where was the county in Colorado?
El Paso.
El Paso?
Yeah.
Who were the... Who was the defendant who was a plaintiff in the suit they filed?
The two lawsuits that I was aware of were residents who had kind of pooled their funds to sue Next Era.
Okay. Thank you very much. So in Colorado, they'd had that same example, but that's what it would come down to, is a suit between the landowner and Next Era, just like Colorado had to do. It's just, it's not an example picking on anything here, but it's just a very astute example of how that... How that system takes action, right? But that's what it would look like. And that goes for anything, not wind energy. If there's an injury to you by somebody else, you take it up to the share of the courts, one and the other.
It could be an oil well. It could be anything.
Yeah.
And that's how I would have to answer that question.
Is that you would take it up with the landowner personally, or... I'm sorry, I didn't hear everything.
You know, if something like that were to happen, you know, that's what courts are for. That's what civil courts are for. You know, if you felt like you were harmed or whatnot, it would be on your burden of proof to prove that in a civil court. That's the way I see it.
Okay. I did have another question. Catherine, I don't know if you can answer this, but how close... Or do they even have an idea of how close that's going to be to the school, to the Prairie View?
It's going to be between, I guess, about three miles away.
Okay. Thank you.
Sorry to push you on the spot, but I do appreciate it.
Do you have any other questions, Jeb? I don't. Okay, we'll move on.
May I say one more thing? You know, when it comes to taking something to a civil court, that means it was built, and you have to wait, right? I mean, you're proving damage after the fact, is that what's...
Well, you can't prove damage before the fact.
Right, but is there anything to prevent this?
Yes, 19 regulatory agencies.
That's where we're going to rely on the recommendation from the experts.
So if the health organization, the Wyoming Health Organization, does put in a recommendation saying there are studies that there could be health issues...
So the way I see it going is, once they make their comments, if they find any health issues, they will suggest mitigating factors to alleviate those issues, whether that's setbacks or otherwise.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's at their level.
Okay.
Quick question. Could you define what you're saying experts are, please?
Well, I think there's a... Jeb has researched this a little bit, but it's, what, 10,000 hours in?
Well, that's a starting point. You know, we need that for 100 years. If you don't have 10,000 hours involved in whatever it is, whether you're laying floor tile or doing whatever, you can't be considered an expert in that. You got a couple, three hours or two days in an internet dive doesn't make somebody an expert, but, you know, somebody who repeats and does the same thing for a minimum of 10,000 hours can then be put into that classification in the trades and everything that I've come through.
And to be... And for us, for our definition, expert's just a word that we... It's a placeholder, but really what it is, is a regulatory agency. It's a... It's an employee of a regulatory agency because they have oversight of something, right? So that is what we call an expert. There may not be experts, but they're employed to handle these sort of things from a technical standpoint.
So in your research, has these people at the ISC had well over the 10,000 hours dived in their life on this? Or is it just that it's a job that they're in and our government?
You should... You should ask to hire the agency.
I'm asking you that.
We don't hire them. I don't know.
I understand that. But you are relying on their recommendations. You just said that.
Because it's the law.
It's the law?
The EPA is the law. The EPA is the law. The DEQ is the law. If I go spill gasoline on the ground, they come here.
They make a recommendation. It's not law. It's a recommendation. There's a difference in the wording there. So you can make your own decisions as the county commissioners of our county.
And I'm going to make my decision based on the recommendations of the state agencies and their comments on the project.
On the state agencies. So we need to clarify that it's not on experts. It's on the state agencies.
And I consider them...
Call it what you like.
Experts above anybody in this room.
Really?
Except for maybe Catherine. Unless there's somebody...
Well, thank you for clarifying that.
And she's doing a very good job doing her due diligence, going and talking to the public, state public health. That is how you do stuff like that. She has recognized that there is a health consequence to these. There is not an M.D. behind any one of these guys' names in here, and we have not spent... Or a Ph.D. So she is talking to the correct person. She is talking to someone who can make an impact on it, who understands the consequences of the health impacts. If you do not like that system, then I don't know what to tell you, but that is what the United States runs on. As I've heard from your guys' mountain, it is the fourth branch of government. So whether that changes or not, that's what we're living in today. They make the health decisions for the... They make health regulations for us.
I was just wanting clarification on what you considered an expert. That's where it came from, and thank you for your answers.
At the county level, we can't afford to hire and maintain a department of those people qualified to make their decisions. And so that's why we rely on the agency and the state that does.
Okay. So what you're basically saying then, that is where you're going to get your decision is from the ISC, the state, the agencies, and not the people that's...
Those are your words, not ours.
Excuse me, please, just a second. And you're not going to take any information, even from Catherine, who has looked at stuff?
That's why I asked.
And the other people that are here that have also described really important things that have documentation and piles and piles of information?
So that's why I asked Catherine if she's been presenting this stuff to the health department.
Fair enough, but that wasn't the question. The question is, what you're telling me is what I'm hearing, just so I'm hearing correctly. You will be taking the ISC and the government information over anything that the community shares with you? Is that correct? Is I hearing correctly?
No, listen, listen.
I am listening.
Just please assume that whatever you say that we said, I'm not going to agree with it. I'm going to go ahead and say it.
I'm quoting you guys. I'm quoting Steve. He just said that.
You're adding...
No, I'm not. I wanted clarification.
We can't give it to you because you won't take it.
What?
We have told you several times, words from our mouths, exactly what we'll do, and then you add stuff and then say it back to us.
I just quoted Steve. Did you not say that, Steve?
So I'm going to base my decision on our regulations that we have in place when...
Thank you for encouraging that. That was another good project. Thank you.
So, and then...
Amazing.
If there are these health issues, if there's wildlife issues, there's a state agency that's going to deal with those.
But you're the ultimate say.
So we ultimately have the say, yes.
Absolutely. Now, I'm going to quote you on that, that you said you have the ultimate say. Are we fair with that and not be shooting us with bullets?
Did you... What? Did you just... What? What'd you just say?
Figured bullets, sorry.
No, what did you just say?
So let's...
He just said...
Let's move on because we have some other things that we got to get to. So, Lucinda.
Just a quick question on this, though, because Catherine has presented at Planning and Zoning. We've presented information at Planning and Zoning, but the regs don't change.
Have we ever changed our position as far as the public health department of the state of Wyoming will be the people who handles that because we are not experts?
Do we need to bring public health to Planning and Zoning, I guess? It's not enough for we, the people, to try and help?
So the regs, you're correct. They currently haven't changed. They will have to go through a public hearing before we can even...
Right, but even our suggestions, they seem to...
So we haven't seen the final draft of what Planning and Zoning has come up with, but I'm assuming there's going to be some changes. I don't know what those all are, but at that time...
Well, a lot of it have to do with the infrasound and the health effects.
It'll go through...
And the Planning and Zoning...
A public hearing.
Even though Catherine is absolutely an expert in this field now, I believe. Yes, absolutely. They don't want... In fact, it was referred to as voodoo. So this is the attitude we're getting on changing the regs, okay?
You know, Lucinda, I can't tell you how many hundreds and hundreds of pages of stuff that I've read that have been sent, you know, electronically and links to look at and whatnot. I've read a lot of it. And the perception that's handed out is, we haven't done that, it seems like, and that's not... That's not factual. I've read a lot of stuff, and some of the stuff, you know, I got to go, whoa. And some of the other stuff, I said, okay, let's look at that. You know, it's kind of a mixed bag. But to have any perception out there that we haven't or don't care about what's been brought forth is incorrect.
Ian talks about it all the time?
Yeah, I mean, we read it. Well, I've looked at it, we've done it. So Lucinda, you have some other stuff that you wanna...
I have one other thing before I begin, though, because Jeb, that stack of papers you laid up there, I find it very interesting that you took time to research the Voight Ranch. How much money did the Voight Ranch accumulate on the...
I have no idea.
Oh, I mean, because you have all the leases, I thought maybe you had an idea. How much our ranch accumulated on that.
There's no money on the lease. That's between you and whoever.
But I find it interesting that you took your time to find all those leases of the Voight Ranch and put it up here and say, oh my, now you've changed your tune. What happened? Exactly what my sister said.
That's all I wanted, was an answer to a question. That's all I wanted.
Do you ever change your mind after you've learned information? And technologies changed?
Sure.
Nothing wrong with that, Jeb?
And I don't have a problem with...
And I didn't say there was.
I don't have a problem with anybody changing their mind.
Just wanted to ask her.
It's the fact that the person that changed their mind, changed their mind. The government didn't make that decision for them. Their neighbors didn't make that decision for them. You made that decision, right? When you changed your mind and you decided that wind energy isn't good, you made that decision. Is that correct? Or did somebody else make that decision for you?
You know, after great research, we know that it's intermittent. It's unreliable. And let's see, Warren Buffett, long time ago, said, if it wasn't for subsidies, there would be no wind turbines, period. The wealthiest man in the country.
There probably wouldn't be any agriculture either.
What's that?
There probably wouldn't be any agriculture either.
Well...
I mean, there's subsidies for everything.
Not to the, no, not to the tune of wind and solar. They've been way more subsidized, Stephen, you know that.
Have you seen the Farm Bill?
No, I'm serious, Ian. Much more than the Farm Bills.
I am dead serious.
Much more than the Farm Bills.
So Lucinda, you have some things you wanna get to.
Sure.
So let's get to those.
Okay. Oh, by the way, the 2008, I'm gonna say this, the 2008 Platte County Development Plan, by the way, called for massive amounts of green energy. And let's go green, you know, and that was, and that was the thing then. We just didn't know. I mean, we're all ignorant back then, okay? But now we've woken up, okay? Climate's a big scam. The whole thing. Okay, but that's not one of mine. All right. What's first on my agenda? Let me see. Hang on. I guess I'll talk about, I wanna get in the record, my letter to the editor from the October 8th edition of the paper, and I'll give you a copy in a minute. We went to a planning and zoning meeting, and one of the commissioners said, you know, I don't think there's a lot of opposition to this wind farm. And we all go, what? The whole, how can you say that? So I said, okay, somebody's gotta write a letter. So I wrote a letter, and I'm going to read it. This is what appeared in the Platte County Record Times on October 8th. During the September 9th planning and zoning meeting to revise the wind energy siting regulations, one commission member suggested that there is little opposition to the Nextera Wind-Solar-BESS project planned east of Chugwater. Many in the audience reacted with an audible gasp to indicate their disagreement. In fact, so far, over 250 people are so opposed to the project that they already have signed three separate petitions that clearly articulate why Nextera's plans for Platte County are detrimental to the area and its citizenry. These three petitions are available for anyone to sign at the following locations. So if you haven't signed one and you want to, listen up. At the Glendo Trading Post, in Guernsey at Hauser Hardware, in Hartville at Miners and Stockman Steakhouse, and in Wheatland at Baumgart's, Two Rowdy Cowgirl Saloon, I mean, no, not saloon, salon, sorry. I think she should start serving these. South Street Pharmacy, Jenkins Auto Body Service LLC, Cowboy Drug, Ace Hardware, The Country Store, The Commodore, The Groomer, and Lou's Barber Shop. I can't sure I got everything. One petition addresses numerous hazards that threaten public health and the integrity of groundwater supply. Wind turbines produce inaudible low-frequency long-wave vibrations known as infrasound. Residents near wind farms can suffer from infrasound-related illness, including long-term sleep disturbance, migraines, dizziness, anxiety, tinnitus, and vertigo, to name just a few. Infrasound also has led to major changes in underground water flow, including recharge and discharge rates of rural wells. As turbine blades age, they shed fiberglass, rendering the land beneath unusable for farming, pasture, and human consumption. I'm gonna add, a recent article said it's like 100 times worse than infrasound, this fiberglass that gets into the ground and on the land, okay? A second petition seeks to protect Wyoming's land, wildlife, and agriculture. Wind turbines are indiscriminate killers of golden eagles and migratory birds. And that's, sorry. Solar farms often pave over productive land entirely. Sage grouse need undisturbed sagebrush expanses. Migration routes to Wyoming's pronghorn mule, deer, and elk are disrupted and blocked by sprawling facilities and fences, and they often run out in the roads. The third petition seeks to protect Wyoming's wide-open spaces and breathtaking vistas that contribute immeasurably to our quality of life, our tourism economy, and our connection to this land. Wind and solar projects fragment the open spaces, disrupt the natural lines of the landscape, and introduce industrial clutter into areas valued for their scenic beauty and solitude. Sacrificing our treasured landscapes for unreliable energy is irrational. Okay, so we've learned that if you think and you learn about this stuff, it's not a good idea. Could you pass that out? And give one to... Thanks. Okay, the second thing I'm gonna talk about... So again, if you haven't signed a petition and you want to... By the way, is there anyone in this room who is opposed to the wind project? Could you guys stand up for me? Okay, great, thanks. Thank you. I just wanna talk a little bit about how we, the people, and how the Republican Party works, and...
Are you representing the Republican Party today?
I'm just gonna... Ian, did you just interrupt me? Did you just interrupt me? No, not again. Every time I talk, you're...
I'm so sorry.
So, real quick, are you done talking about petitions? I just had a question about it.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, we can stop, yeah.
So how much weight should we put on petitions?
What do you think, Steve? What percentage of the county would you like to sign the petition?
So what I'm saying is, in 2011, we were presented with a petition signed by probably equal or maybe more, I can't remember exactly how many people signed it, that said...
2011?
Yes.
I just wanna research this. Okay, go ahead.
So it was, it was when the building in Wyoming, we wanted the High Plains Initiative, was going on. We were presented with a petition that says, we do not want the government telling us what we can and can't do with our property. We do not want more regulations against the use of our property. And that was a petition that was presented to us, which is basically exactly the opposite of the petition you guys are circulating right now. So, I guess what I'm asking is, how much weight do we put on those?
You know, what is a commissioner's job in Platte County? What do you see as your job, Steve? Do you look out for the health, wealth, and safety of people in the project or all of Platte County?
I think all of Platte County is our job, and I've said that before.
Okay.
So, but...
And is ag a big part of Platte County?
Ag's a huge part of Platte County.
Okay, should we protect that land? Because once this happens, that land will not be usable in any sense of imagination for ag in generations, let's say.
And that's your opinion.
No, it's not my opinion.
I mean, every picture I see of wind farms, there's cattle grazing at the bottom of them. Almost exclusively, every picture I see of wind farms.
Were there a lot of cattle when we went to Medicine Bow? Did you see a lot of cattle out there?
I didn't, but I've been through there when there are.
Okay.
So, but I see...
But I'm not talking about now, Steve.
I see pictures of wind farms in the middle of wheat fields where they're combining the wheat.
Well, that would be interesting with fiberglass. Would you eat that bread? I don't know. That'd be hard, you know, that's a hard sell.
I, contrary to what you guys think, we've done a lot of research on our own, looking at these things. Are you guys familiar with Jack's Solar Garden? Look that up.
Could you give me copies of stuff? I've given you lots of stuff.
It's, it's not my job to give you stuff. I research for myself. But what I'm asking you is, is how much weight should we put on a petition?
Do you think you should ignore it?
Well, what I have problems with is, we have one petition that was presented to us that's exactly the opposite of the next petition. So what would you do in that case? And I, and I can almost...
You have another, you have another set of petitions that are coming in from 2011, but...
We got a petition in 2011 that said, we don't want the government telling us what we can and can't do with our property.
Right.
We don't want more regulations. I think if you go to the 2011 Commissioners Meeting, July 5th is when they presented those commissions to us. It says, right, in the Commissioners Minutes, that they were indicating they don't want more regulations on the use of their property.
I think that's, that's not a bad thing, but here's the deal.
But the, the other problem is...
Private property rights are not absolute, right?
There's probably people that sign both petitions.
You mean, you mean people could change their mind from 2011 to 2025, Steve? Is that what you're saying?
They sure can.
Okay, there you go.
But I think there's a lot of people that sign petitions that don't have any idea what they're signing to. Because I specifically went out and asked people when we were presented that petition. I said, what's your stance on this? Why did you sign it? And they said, I don't know why I signed it. I signed it 'cause he signed it.
It's interesting, 'cause we leave a room for comments, too, and they give us comments. So I do believe that the people that sign our petitions actually read them. And so I gave you the short view. I had, that article was 650 words, and the paper said, oh, cut it down to 350. And I said, okay. So I left a lot out.
But what I'm trying to get you to see is that we get competing issues. I mean, we got one petition that tells us one thing, another petition that tells us something else.
Should you listen to your people?
We gotta be somewhere in the middle.
Do you think you should ignore them? Or Jeb, what do you think? Do you think you should look at those petitions?
We listen to everything.
Do you? Excellent. Ian, do you think you should look at the petitions? Do they have any weight?
I, yeah, absolutely. Does he get, one question for you. How'd you verify the signatures? Gotcha. Did you verify signatures?
We haven't done that yet.
Okay, I was just curious.
No, we haven't verified signatures yet until we pick them up, pick them all up.
So you can go on. I just wanted you to understand that we do get competing petitions in this case.
Well, you certainly may. For the people who are sitting here might petition to be, to form the project. Certainly, they might come up with a petition to be for the project, too. Yeah.
We look at everything.
Just remember that private property rights are not absolute. That's why we have regulations. That's why we have planning and zoning, right? You can't put a pig farm in the middle of Cheyenne, okay? They're not absolute. Even though you own a block in Cheyenne, you can't do that, can you, Steve? No, that's the point. If it harms downtown Cheyenne...
What version of, like, your community would you like to live in? One where increasingly there's more people telling you what you can't do? Or one where there's less of that?
It depends on how much my health concerns are priorities, Ian. My health might be the priority.
No, no answer or in answer, which one?
My health might be more important. And that's one of the things that you guys raise your hand for. You raise your hand to help protect the health, safety, and welfare of everybody and of agriculture in Platte County. Southeastern Wyoming is ag.
Are you an agricultural producer?
Pardon me?
Are you an agricultural producer?
Yeah, in a way.
Clarify this.
Does leased ranch land count?
That makes you an absentee.
No, it doesn't. Wrong.
This point's going, by the way, I'm done, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Exactly.
So go on to your GOP resolution.
Can you start my timer?
No, 'cause we have people waiting up always.
I mean, my halftime, 'cause that took away...
So go on to your GOP resolution.
Yeah, okay. The GOP, just a general thing on how it works. There are local people in precincts. They're precinct people. And they meet, we meet monthly, actually. And anybody, you don't even have to be a precinct person, can bring a resolution. Well, this is the platform for the Republican Party, okay? And y'all are Republicans, I think, right? You ran on the Republican ticket, is that right?
Right, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
We just got, that's funny, because we just got a sheriff candidate that you guys sent us that was a Democrat. So I don't know how much that means, right? And maybe it wasn't you guys that did it, but in any case, the Republican Party sent somebody who ran as a Democrat. I think that's interesting.
In a Democrat area in Colorado? And then you come to Wyoming and you run as a Republican? Would you run as a Democrat in Platte County?
No, because I'm not a Democrat.
But if...
I don't believe in their values, right? So I don't know.
I wouldn't have been a Democrat in Colorado.
You wouldn't win, Steve. Okay, all right. So this is like the backbone of the party, okay? Life, equality, Second Amendment, private... Okay, so these are the things that don't change much over the years. But resolutions are sort of the action items that the party suggests that the legislators should listen to, okay? I called on Friday to the GOP because this resolution that we put up in Platte County a month ago or so, August 12th, it passed unanimously. It was taken to the State Central Committee meeting where it passed. So it is now an official, they changed it from Platte County to state of Wyoming. So when I read it, it'll say Platte County, but just think state. I'm gonna read it, okay? I want this on the record so that you know these were suggestions for the lawmakers, elected officials, to go by, okay? Platte County Republican Party Resolution Against Wind, Solar, and BESS Projects in Platte County. Whereas wind, solar, BESS electricity are dilute, intermittent, unreliable forms of energy available only when nature allows that require vast amounts of land, land that is often critical for agriculture and wildlife. And whereas large-scale development of solar, wind, and batteries increases demand for critical minerals, lithium, nickel, rare earths, that entail extensive mining processing and supply chain externalities, often offshore, and impose environmental and human health costs before the components even arrive here. Whereas BES, using lithium ion chemistry, have documented fire and thermal runaway risks at utility scale, while local first responders may lack training, equipment, and access to sites for safe firefighting and prolonged cooling. And whereas wind turbine noise and low-frequency sound can produce annoyance and sleep disruption for nearby residents at certain exposures, as well as many other documented negative health symptoms. Additionally, the infrasound from wind turbines causes groundwater and aquifer destabilization. Whereas wind turbines are indiscriminate killers of golden eagles, other raptors, and migratory bats, while wind projects fragment crucial habitats and disrupt and block migration routes of Wyoming's pronghorn antelope, mule deer, and elk. Whereas the conversion of prime agricultural soils and loss of irrigated acreage in Platte County diminish local food production capacity and resilience. Whereas local agricultural economies and food security produce long-term stable economic value. Intermittent energy projects often bring temporary construction jobs and limited permanent employment, while permanently reducing productive farmland. Whereas public policy that prioritizes the citing of wind, solar, and BES on prime farmland without demonstrated net benefits to local food security and without full accounting for reliability and life cycle material costs is inconsistent with protecting human flourishing and local economic resilience. Now therefore be it resolved that the Platte County Republican Party, one, finds and declares that preserving prime farmland and local food security is a core public interest that must be weighed explicitly and heavily in energy citing decisions. Two, opposes the citing of wind and solar projects on agricultural land and critical wildlife habitats in Platte County. Three, rejects mandates, subsidies, and policies that artificially favor solar and wind projects. Four, champions energy freedom, allowing reliable energy sources to thrive. And it was approved on August 12th and then at the state as well. And I'll get you the copies from the state, signed by the state.
Thank you.
Yes, you guys can each have a copy here. And then give them to-
One quick thing before we move, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
Listen to thank you for that. But when we took an oath, we took an oath, I don't recall that we took an oath to follow any resolution from any political party. But having said that, we look at everything, you know, and we'll look at this. So one quick thing I've been thinking about for, you know, two, three weeks, a month. And I kind of jotted some things down. And basically, this is the rules that we live by as the Board of Commissioners. As Commissioners, we recognize that the trust placed in us by the people we serve is both an honor and a responsibility. To uphold that trust, we must commit ourselves to set, to a set of guiding principles that reflect integrity, transparency, and service to the good public, to the public good, excuse me. Number one, truth. We pledge to be honest in every word, action, and decision. Truth is the foundation of good governance. We will seek facts before forming opinions, communicate openly with our colleagues and constituents, and ensure that the information we share is accurate and complete. Even when the truth is inconvenient or difficult, we will not compromise it for personal or political gain. Number two, fairness. Every individual deserves to be treated with respect, equality, and impartiality. We will approach every issue and decision with an open mind, free from bias or favoritism. Fairness means listening to all sides, considering the impact of our choices on the entire community, and striving for outcomes that serve the greater good rather than any single interest. Accountability. We hold ourselves accountable for our actions, words, and the results of our decisions. We'll own our mistakes, learn from them, and remain answerable to the people we represent. Accountability breeds, builds credibility, and without it, trust cannot endure. Transparency. Our work should be visible and understandable to the public. We will conduct business openly, make information accessible, and encourage participation in the design or the decision-making process. Transparency ensures that our actions can withstand public scrutiny. Respect and collaboration. We will work together in the spirit of respect, even when opinions differ. Healthy debate and mutual understanding strengthen our ability to serve effectively. By valuing each person's perspective, we create better, more balanced solutions for our community. Together, these principles, truth, fairness, and accountability, transparency, and respect, define the ethical foundation of our work. They're not just words we recite, but values we live by every day in service to those who have entrusted us with leadership. And that's how we look at things.
I have a question. Thank you for sharing that with us. You left out financial gain. Are any of you on this panel have any financial gain, promises of financial gain from this next TARA project? Could you answer me yes or no, please?
No.
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 Thank you.
Okay, thank you, guys. We'll move on. We have our new county sheriff on our agenda.
So, Mr. Chairman, first, we do have a couple of schedule conflicts on the dispatch MOU. There's a basic question. If we get into nitty-gritty, I do think we need to go to executive session for contract negotiations. And so in that, I guess the question is, I sent you a series of edits. Do you agree with those or no, from your perspective? If you need some information from the sheriff or Deputy County Attorney Roth, let me know. But if you want more feedback, we need to not discuss it in a public, it's a contract negotiation.
So do we want to move on to the sheriff and start down our list of things, emergency management coordinator discussion?
I, I didn't know if you wanted a deeper dive on the MOU.
I, I think I will.
Okay, sounds good.
Second time in a week it's been said.
Morning, gentlemen. Morning. So is there anybody else in the hallway that's, I think, I think the fire districts wanted to-
Yeah, we have fire districts out there if we can-
You can squeeze them in here.
Squeeze them in, we'll make it.
We do need time with just Doug on a little dispute. And not, Mr. Weaver's not going to be present for the dispatch MOU discussion due to his conflict. So-
So when do we have-
Yeah, I guess, need to know.
We need to go into the second session right now.
First, later, what?
You could do Tony and then when you're done with all of that.
How much time do you have?
I'll make time, how's that?
Frankly, I'm here either way, so whatever you guys want to do. I said sometimes a strength for you, Doug.
No, no, I agree, because I'll have to wait for that other stuff a little bit too soon. Why don't you finish with Tony?
Okay.
Because they have officers and then the fire ones and stuff.
So I think our discussion as far as emergency management coordinator is, do we want to move forward with the same staffing level that we currently have? And how does that relate with the fire warden position?
I actually really liked the combining the two positions.
Which one?
The fire warden and then the emergency manager.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
We'll give him a little sign. He might be combining three into one.
Well, it's been really fun, ladies and gentlemen.
Yeah.
But I thought that worked out really well, having both of those departments together. And, you know, for the budget, we were able to kind of work that pretty well. And frankly, anything, by just the definition of the name, anything that the fire warden's going to go to, emergency management needs to know about anyhow. So I thought they meshed well together. And I personally would like to see, if at all possible, that, you know, remain where it is with that, having both of those in one spot. That being said, I understand it's probably not going to be as easy to find and replace that.
You're irreplaceable.
Not even trying to, trying to butter that one up, but uh-
So the fire districts are here. What's your guys' opinion on moving forward with the emergency manager coordinator slash fire warden? It hasn't been in place that way for a long time. Originally, we had a fire warden that was separate, you know, part-time fire warden. Now we currently have emergency management coordinator slash fire warden, and then two assistant fire wardens. How's that been working?
Well, I guess from our viewpoint, we weren't really aware of the two deputy wardens. I mean, there probably could have been a little better communication, but I think I agree with the sheriff. I think having the two positions combined probably makes it a little more streamlined. You're just, like you said, you're going to notify one instead of two people. And the coordination, I think, you know, probably depends on the workload throughout the year, the timing here, and what's going on in the county. But I would think what we've been doing has been working pretty good. In the event that we're not able to find somebody in a decent amount of time to step in as that emergency management coordinator, is that position maybe a little tougher, tough to fill? What would you think about having a fire warden outside of that because we can't fill that position? I mean, what are you guys thinking on that? If that's a tough sell or a tough fill for us?
I guess that comes back to the qualifications that you're required to have for emergency management and, you know, for the fire warden. Because fire warden's going to have to be Waddle Land certified. I mean, you have to have almost two separate individuals that have the same type of mindset, you know? Me, I like preparedness and I, on purpose, and I love fire. I don't know why. I'm cocked, but I love fire. So it just, it interested me, finding that type of person, which I know they're out there. I mean, it, it's going to be a little more tough. And you look at the emergency management side of the world, most of those folks are retired. I liked it because I could kind of do with it what I, what I wanted to with the, I like to respond to things. I like to not read in the paper and then have to do my reports and after actions based upon what somebody else told. I like to be able to see it. I felt like I could teach better that way. I felt like I could learn better that way. I don't know if that's going to be the next individual's way of doing things, but, I mean, all the respect in the world to Terry Stevenson, but him and I are complete opposites, I believe, on that, that portion of the job. So-
Well, that's not like you had a staff that you were training people to step up and fill your shoes, because you were a one-man band.
That's right, and I yelled at my, my employees all the time. So-
Review, disappointment.
Dave, do you have any input?
Yeah, according to the legislation, the main reason I see that we have a fire warden is, number one, so that the state doesn't have to disperse money to every different entity after a paid fire. And number two, to deal with state resources that are, would be harder for each of us to know and deal with, you know, the airplanes and things like that. I'm hoping we're done with fire season for the year, so to me, we have kind of a break in here if it takes some time to build a position. I personally am a little bit bugged by the idea that the fire warden should run fires. I, that's my understanding that everywhere else in the country, the first guy on the fire is the one that takes the IC position because he can see the fire. And he knows what resources are necessary. And our problem is, the first guy on the fire starts messing with the fire and we got 40 people there before anybody ever catches on. But we really need to be training our people to do it correctly because we all need the size up. And one of these days, I'm going to get a sheriff that'll actually listen to me when I ask if we can get the deputies to give us a size up one. Because I don't see any reason for a deputy to drive 80 miles an hour to a fire unless he's going to give me a size up when he gets there. Personal opinion. But I, I, I think that it's good to have the emergency manager and the fire, fire warden all tied together because of, it's, to me, that's what it's all about, is mostly paperwork for that, for that guy. And to have a firefighter trying to sit down after a fire and go through all this, all these reports and making the bean counters happy is a little irritating for some of us. So it's nice to have somebody in an office that you can call up and say, "We had this many people on the fire, and this is what we had." That's what I'd like to see. I'd like to see us training our people to IC fires better than we are.
To throw that out there for you, that was, I'm not going to also toot my horn on this one.
I told you before.
So, and we've talked about this actually with every district, is my job is not to take your fire. My job is to come here, help you without, because I may not have the answers, but I got a phone that has about 3,000 contacts in it. So I will find you who it is. But I agree, I mean, I think the couple of times that the wardens did take over this year was because we, well, especially, you know, these ones over west town, we had a lot of people that had more important stuff to do. And if my guys don't have water in the truck, it just makes sense for us to be able to kind of look at it and, okay, where are we going to be the best?
To be frank with you, at this point, we really need to continue the way we've been doing it because the way we have been training our people.
Yes.
Our people are pretty well trained to wait for the fire warden to tell them what to do. And to me, it's confusing because it, it makes the firefighters think that, that there's, there's a guy that's in charge of all the fire. But fire districts are in charge, they are responsible for the fires in their area. That's why they have the right to tax. And I, I fear that we're letting the fire warden take some, take over some theoretical responsibility he doesn't have. I've tried telling a few of them in the past, because they'll, they'll come around and tell people to wear, "You're not wearing the right gear." That's not the fire warden's problem. It's, it's the district's problem. If you got a guy out there fighting fire without the right PPE, it's, the fire warden can get in his truck technically and drive off and keep his mouth shut. He should never have any problem. But the guys on the board of that district are going to have a problem. So that's where I, I kind of, I kind of get bugged by the confusion of, where, where the, the authority and the responsibility goes. I, I just wish we could be more clear on that as we actually go forward and get our training done correctly.
So basically, you're thinking the way that we're operating now is a good direction to keep going. And what do you guys think?
Yeah, I just, I don't, I don't want any more mission creep. As a, as a, as a board member, when you guys hired another guy without asking the districts, it irritated me because you asked us to pay the bill. And I'm happy you guys do everything you do, but you don't have authority to spend my money. Sorry. So I realize it's other people's money, but we all have to guard, guard our positions pretty, pretty carefully.
And we did that with input from the districts. Will, do you have any?
No, I, the current system, I think, is working fine. I truthfully don't want to come to the meetings and talk about fire to you guys. So I appreciate having a warden that can come to the meetings, because I don't want to come to more meetings. So I think this works out great. He can tell us what's going on, or the person can tell us what to do and what's going on. I'm fine with that. The two assistants-
The warden that started looking into these subdivisions and some of the fire, fire things that go on with subdivisions. And I was glad that he was, had more input with the state. And he knew who to talk to, and there were some things that we really needed, probably still do. So it'd be good to have a fire warden that's kind of keeping an eye on countywide, how to, how to mitigate problems with fires as they come up.
So by statute, we have to have an emergency manager.
Yeah, that's what I say, you have to.
We make that recommendation to the governor, and the governor is the one that actually appoints the emergency management coordinator for the county. But we included it or combined it with the fire warden position. And Tony took the position. And then, of course, Aaron, the fire warden, wanted to retire. So that was kind of, and we haven't been in that staffing level for very long. So we wanted to kind of see how it was working and-
I thought it worked really well this year.
Before we decide how we move forward, whether we advertise for that position again.
Maybe one thing we could do, especially before the heavy fire season starts in the spring, is have all the districts to get together at a meeting, you know, with the fire warden and emergency management, and just say, "Here's what we're looking at for the year." Because I think that's where we miss it sometimes, is some of that communication. We've got the training facility and can do that. So if we're going to do that, that, that might help everybody get on the same page.
But I don't think the operation, somebody else shows that he can on and off on. Turn it on and off too. And hopefully, that's a more qualified person. You know, the role that the fire warden has always taken is, what, what resources do you guys need that you don't have, you know, available to you that I can go out, you know, either from the state or the federal level and try to- you know, either from the state or the federal level and try to bring in? And I think that's the, the major role of the fire warden. I don't think it's to take over the fire unless, I know there's a lot of times that the fires were turned over to the fire warden just because nobody else wanted to do that job, so.
Yeah, I, just my biggest advocate for that is, as fire warden, you have your contacts with state forestry, BLM, all those kinds, but on the emergency management side, you have your contacts with FEMA, you have WOAS, you have pretty much everything else. I think when you funnel that down into one, it makes it a lot easier to deal, especially when you have a situation going on where the average person isn't really thinking about the end result and the middle result, they're thinking it here now. So it allows that person to do that.
I think, you know, the emergency management coordinator position is, a lot of it is satisfying the state requirements to get the grant to fund the position. Which sometimes that doesn't make a lot of sense to me if you just create a job, create busy work for somebody. But I know you did a lot of planning and, and what risks do we have in the county? What assets do we have in the county to deal with those risks? Those are all things that we need to do.
You know, and you get them and you're absolutely correct. I mean, a lot of it is doing what you need to do to appease and essentially make sure that you're still getting paid for your job. Which is kind of up in the air based upon, you know, where we're going in the future with FEMA and all that. And that's what really makes it difficult. And I think that's been most of my, my job here lately is making sure that they are able to show the federal government that we're doing stuff, but then putting more and requesting more from emergency management. I can see that hopefully in the future will even help, especially if you get a good baseline to start with these plans. The year to year, they just need to be updated and it's a lot easier instead of having to create them.
It also makes you more familiar with the federal processes that drive some of the, you know, outs, after the fire repercussions. You're dealing with a lot of the same agencies, the emergency manager already has contacts with. I think that's actually tying those two positions makes both of them more effective.
Yeah, and like I said, it trains your brain to think about the.
Yes, exactly.
Did you have something else, Dave?
Now, one of the good things with tying the two positions together is our industrial assets. If we had a problem with a pipeline, this way, the emergency manager, emergency would know how to deal with FEMA.
Yes.
Homeland Security, all of those people that really need to be brought in right away.
Yes.
And they also would probably be more keen on the maps because if you have a problem with a pipeline and you don't, the first thing you do is call the placard and let them get theirselves out there because, but even railroads, you need to bring all these other entities in that a normal fire warden wouldn't normally be jumping on as quick as he probably ought to be.
It's been, it's worked. It's worked pretty good.
Okay. It's good to hear.
Okay, Will, we'll.
So we'll advertise for it?
Advertise for it.
If the sheriff can get us through the.
Thanks, Will.
And maintain operation till we get somebody.
Yeah, I mean, if we need to advertise it and whole page, let's do that.
Just as a check.
So don't throw that hat away just yet.
No, I mean, I, I love the idea of having all the signs that I just flip at the time, but.
Yeah, can't be, can't be. I mean, you didn't really give us two weeks' notice.
Yeah.
But they didn't really let you.
No, it wasn't really an option, so that's okay.
Good deal.
Which is a good time to use.
Maybe not, but.
Not for me and the federal side with the, the grants and everything going on, but as for the outside world, it, it worked out really well.
Okay, we'll move into our dispatch discussion. Is Doug still out there? We're only going to executive session for that.
Yeah, and we do not want Doug to be present for that one.
Not, okay.
We want Morrell and the sheriff.
I would move to.
None.
Executive.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Percent to upper.
Sixteen, four, four, five.
Yeah, sixteen, four, four, five, A. Where is it?
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to move into executive session for contract negotiation. For the discussion.
I'm going to share some of my thoughts that I wrote down last night for you all that relate to the wind deal.
Thanks.
Yeah. And section of comments. This is dividing.
Yeah, very.
Yeah.
Morrell, get a hold of Brian.
Signify by saying aye. Make your motion carries.
Hello, sir.
So we would continue to have you negotiate with the town and Brian in regards to the dispatcher agreement.
I can do that.
Doug, we would continue to have you negotiate in regards to...
Try to get it.
Helped out.
Thank you guys.
So what are we doing next?
Getting copies.
So they'll call for an executive session for security.
Okay.
But I think we should let folks know that we won't come after a normal session.
Stay up for just a few quick seconds. You're way too patient.
It's right now.
Patient is running out.
Peeing on your feet.
They would've ran out of their blood.
I mean, I just want you to know...
You guys are way too patient. I think I made a magnificent...
I think I made a bad move. Let's do it up here first.
What?
Ben's old. Those old guys can't bend over.
Yeah, I know it. Start wearing shoes without laces.
That's pepperoni.
Thank you, sir. Okay.